Meeting, we'd like to welcome you all to be with us tonight. It's such a blessing to see you. I'd ask that you stand for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you again for an opportunity to gather. We thank you for the safe passage here. Lord, we just asked that you would fill us with your wisdom and your discernment. Father, we ask that you would lead and guide us to make decisions that honor you and show our passion and our care for our community. Lord, we ask that you would bless each one who's made their way here tonight and that you keep them safe as they travel home. Lord, we ask it all in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we are very excited to have you all here tonight. It always blesses us to see people come out and care about what's going on in their county government. Item number one on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Unless there is an objection, we will include both subsection A and subsection B. Subsection A being the county council meeting minutes of August 16th and subsection B being the county council finance committee meeting of August 21st. So, is there an objection? Hearing none, all in favor? I'm sorry, is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. I would only ask for a couple of minor editorial changes.
Okay, can we get, we'll get a motion second and we'll get them in comments. How about that? All right, motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Reverend Curry. Now, comments, Mr. Hip?
Yes, on our finance committee meeting minutes, I think we had some meeting dates, future dates that were incorrect. It was either in that one of them had, I think, September 20th for our executive committee and September 20th for our economic development committee. So those were incorrect. I think it's
September 11th. September 11th is executive.
The executive committee meets on September 11th, Mr. Reader says.
Yeah, that's, that's the correct date.
Okay, so.
So if we would get those dates corrected, that was the only editorial.
Okay, so there's an editorial change request. So there's, is there a motion? Will you amend your motion to include that change, Mr. Shealy? Will you amend your second? To include that change, okay. Anybody else with comments? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number two on our agenda is any additions or deletions to the agenda?
None.
Hearing none, is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as published? Motion by Mr. C., second by Mr. Reader. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number three on the agenda, public appearances. And the first is our lovely and amazing Newberry County Auditor, Ms. Donna Lomenek, to set the 2023-24 tax levy.
Oh, good. You got it, Eric? Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of county council, I stand before you honored and humbled for the fifteenth time to recommend to you the 2023-24 Newberry County Tax Levy. I want to say a big thank you to Debbie Cromer, our finance director, for her expertise in assisting me this year. Debbie is an asset to Newberry County. Also, I'd like to thank Karen Bremer, Karen Smith, and Jeff Shaker for their assistance. A big thank you to the Newberry County Auditor's office for always being there for me. And Melinda Law, my deputy auditor, is here tonight. Okay. As Newberry County Auditor, I am officially stating the 2023-24 Tax Levy for all county and school bonded indebtedness purposes is authorized by Section 4-15150 and 59-71150 of the 1976 Code of Laws of South Carolina. I am presenting the 2023 Tax Levy for school ordinary purposes as set by the Newberry County School Board of Education per letter dated August 8th, 2023, which stated in part, "The 2023 School Ordinary Tax Levy be set at 180 meals." Per County of Newberry Budget Ordinance Number 508-2023, I am recommending county levy be 123 meals for county ordinary purposes, for reserve fund zero meals. For 2023 county lease purchase, I am levying three and six tenths meals. County general obligation bonds of 2020A, I am levying nine tenths meal. County general obligation bonds of 2020B, I am levying three tenths of a meal. County general obligation bonds of 2018C, I am levying three tenths of a meal. Per County of Newberry Budget Ordinance 5-923, I am recommending county council levy six and nine tenths meals for community services, for a total 2023 levy for county purposes of 135 meals. For school purposes, the Newberry County Board of Education has levied 180 meals for their school ordinary for the 2023-24 fiscal year. For school general obligation bonds of 2023, I am levying 53 meals for a total of 2023 levy for school purposes of 233 meals. The total levy for county purposes is 135 meals and for school purposes is 233 meals. The total 23 tax levy for both county and school purposes is 368 meals. The anticipated value of a meal for the 2023-24 fiscal year for county purposes is $164,645. For school purposes, for the bonds, is $171,003. And for school purposes, the school operating is 111,342 meals. Respectfully submitted, Donna Lomenek. And I have a little PowerPoint that I wanted to show you. Of course, I've got all our old buildings. Okay, Eric? Our 23 levy is the school district, county, and the city of Newberry, town of Whitmire, town of Promaria, town of Little Mountain, and town of Prosperity. Our tax bill will show all these municipalities and the county and the school. Okay? And our, the city of Newberry went from 80, they have gone up from 80.7 to 81.7. They went up one meal this year. Town of Little Mountain has an increase of 7.97 meals. They went to 52.07. Town of Promaria had no increase, 3.7. Town of Prosperity, 41 meals, no increase. Town of Whitmire increased 2.5 meals. They went to 105.5. So out of the towns, three increased their levy also. And this is just a breakdown of our levy showing the general fund, the bonds, the community services, and our total county and our schools, and a breakdown for us. And this is just anticipated tax levies used to set the mileage. I'm showing the 22 and the 23, what it was. Actually, the whole levy for this year. Last year, the school and the county was 366 meals. This year, it's going to be 368 meals. So that's an increase of two meals. And that's just a chart showing you the school versus the county. And then that's my little pie chart I always put on my tax bill. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from any council member?
As you notice, our county bonds did not increase. They stayed at 5.1.
Outstanding job as usual. Thank you so much, Ms. Lomenek, for everything that you do.
And tax bills are going to be out first month of.
All right, subsection B was to be a report from Malden and Jenkins on our audit. I was informed right before we came into the meeting that the auditor's wife has had a child and so he's in the right place. And we will get that report at our next council meeting. Item number four on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Newberry County. I'd like to provide you with the proclamation. It's County of Newberry, State of South Carolina, whereas the County of Newberry encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. And whereas the County of Newberry commemorate the strong and visible roots of Hispanic and Latino heritage in the national, regional, regional and local landscape of the nation. And whereas September 15th to October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month, in which many federal agencies, such as the Library of Congress, National Park Service, and Smithsonian Institution join in paying tribute to the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. Whereas the date September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence from Latin America countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And additionally, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and 18th respectively. Whereas Newberry County has many families representing different Hispanic cultures and traditions from Puerto Rico, Mexico, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, El Salvador, Chile, and other South American countries. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated since 1989. And whereas the Hispanic community in Newberry County makes a significant contributions to the cultural, educational, and economic vitality of Newberry County. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the County Council of Newberry that September 15th through October 15th shall be National Hispanic Heritage Month in Newberry County in recognition of the many important and positive contributions of the Hispanic culture to our nation, state, and county. Is there a motion that we so issue this proclamation? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Hip. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, carries unanimously. Thank you so much. And is someone here to receive that? Thank you so much. Yes, you may certainly say something.
I want to thank council, Mr. Administrator, for this proclamation. I know that I, every year, try to do this. This is our second year with the county and I really appreciate the county for doing this for us. Our Hispanic community in Newberry is growing, as we all know. And like Chairman said, it is being very economically favorable to the county of Newberry. And I know that we have some people up here, Osvaldo, who most people know here. Ruby, from the newspaper, from the Observer. We have Julio, who's a community member. And of course, Mr. Boris, our sheriff deputy. We have many other outstanding Hispanics who have contributed a lot to Newberry County. And we're all very proud and just thank you for everything you all are doing for us.
Thank you so very much. All right, item number five on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing September 18th through 22nd to 2023 as the Newberry County Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. This proclamation, again, County of Newberry, State of South Carolina, whereas during the 2021-2022 academic year, 5,754 high school students in South Carolina dropped out of school, a rate of 2.4%. Whereas adult education programs continue to contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career and colleges. Whereas adult education and family literacy programs assist adults who are parents or family members of obtaining the education and skills that are necessary to become full partners in the educational development of their children and lead to sustainable improvements in the economic opportunities for their family. Whereas South Carolina celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their adult education options to obtain their professional and personal goals. Whereas in the Palmetto State, an estimated 796,387 citizens aged 16 to 74 are below the literacy level. And an estimated 450,966 South Carolinians over the age over the age of eighteen do not have a high school diploma or equivalent. Whereas in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, South Carolina Adult Education Programs serve twenty-one thousand nine adult learners, with two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven earning high school equivalency diplomas, and eight hundred and thirty-one earning a high school diploma. Whereas in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, Newberry Adult and Continuing Education Programs serve two hundred and eighty-nine learners, with twenty-eight earning a high school equivalency diploma, and twenty-five earning a South Carolina high school diploma. Therefore be it proclaimed by Newberry County, the county council of Newberry, that September eighteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, shall be called the Newberry County Adult Education and Family Literacy Week throughout the county, and encourage all citizens of Newberry County to work together to increase literacy among the residents of the Palmetto State. Is there a motion that we approve this resolution? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously. Ms. Donna, you gonna come get this one?
And my colleagues and my boss, Ms. Roberta Klein, who's here, and Ms. Margaret Sparrow, and Dr. Terry Fellers.
Please bring in all that you would like to bring up with you.
They are the part of our program. There's a Swiss psychiatrist that is no longer among us, and he's known as Carl Jung, J-U-N-G. He was a philosopher, and he said, "We must look forward to a future we will never seek, but by which we must handle." We do this every day in our work, and I'm sure all of you do in your personal lives, as we do as well. Thank you so much for supporting the future that will be better because of all these people and the people throughout the state who help bring adult education to life for everybody in the state.
Need you to come around and do a picture? Can we split maybe?
I'll get in the back.
Okay.
You're just like a teacher.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And I'm gonna make one comment. My wife, Susan Fellers, whom y'all all know, had a successful hip replacement surgery about eight hours ago, in less than twenty minutes.
Wow. Ms. Fellers was just incredibly important to this council and so much that she did for so many people along the way, so we're, we're so glad to hear that. Item number six on our agenda is ordinance number zero seven, zero one dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance for the purpose of leasing property located as part of the Fairgrounds property, TMS number three nine nine dash three nine dash two, to the Newberry Pistol Club. Subsection A of this agenda item is the public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open, and if there's anyone to speak on this matter, you are welcome to come to the podium at this time. Hearing none, unless there's objection from council, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Without objection, the public hearing is now closed. Subsection B of this is the third reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion that this be third reading? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Reader. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Cease.
Will be abstaining from the vote.
Mr. Cease will be abstaining from the vote because of a relationship with the Pistol Club? Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, other than Mr. Cease, by, in approval of this motion, by a showing of hand. Opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously with Mr. Cease abstaining from the vote. Item number seven on our agenda is ordinance number zero seven, zero two, two zero two three, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad ver lorem taxes and an incentive agreement by and between Newberry County, South Carolina, and Project Viking to provide for a payment in fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. Is there a motion this be third reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Cease. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number eight on our agenda is ordinance number zero eight, zero one dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number one two dash two four dash zero one, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number zero six dash one one dash one six, and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishing zoning classifications and districts as to rezone two real estate parcels totaling twelve and twenty-nine hundreds acres designated as TMS number two nine oh dash one six and TMS number two nine oh dash one two, from limited commercial to residential, general residential. Uh, Ms. Katie, is anything changed since the last reading?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing from Ms. Katie, is there a motion that this be second reading? Mr. Cease makes a motion this be second reading. Mr. Shealy makes a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the ordinance by a show of hands, and opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously. Um, sub, item number nine on our agenda is ordinance number zero eight, zero two dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number one two dash two four dash zero one, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number zero six dash one one dash one six, and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishes zoning classifications and districts as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling two acres designated as TMS number five three zero dash one three, from limited commercial to R-two rural. Katie, is there any changes from the first reading of this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, no changes have been made by our, our building department. Is there a motion that this be second reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, this be second reading, uh, second by Mr. Reader, that this be second reading. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, that motion carries unanimously. Item number ten on our agenda is ordinance number zero eight, zero three, two zero two three, which is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of Prosperity Park Avenue into the Newberry County Public Road System. This is, uh, under subsection A, this is our public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter is invited to come to the podium at this time. Hearing none, and seeing no one move, unless there's objection from council, we will declare the public hearing closed. Without objection, public hearing is closed. Uh, subsection B is second reading. Uh, is there a motion related to second reading? Mr. Hip makes a motion this be second reading. Mr. Shealy makes a second, that this be second reading. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven on our agenda is ordinance number zero eight, zero four dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of roads within Autumn's K subdivision, Autumn Drive, Golden Way, Harvest Lane, and Red Leaf Court into the Newberry County Public Road System. Uh, subsection A of this agenda item is the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter is asked to come forward to the podium at this Hearing none, unless there's objection from council, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Without objection, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion related to second reading? Mr. Cease makes the motion this be second reading. Mr. Shealy makes a second, this be second reading. Is there any discussion amongst council? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number twelve on our agenda, our appointments, um, subsection A is the Newberry County Joint Planning Commission District Six representative. Who's got that? You do.
Yes, sir. I have Mrs. Uh... Anne Ward.
What's the last name?
Ward.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay. And what, and you're appointing her to that joint planning commission?
Joint Planning Commission.
Okay. Motion from Reverend Skur, that, uh, appoint Anne Ward to the Joint Planning Commission? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shealy. Is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, Ms. Ward is appointed to the Joint Planning Commission. Newberry County...
And Ms. Ashley Sheely to the Airport Commissioner.
Okay. Motion to appoint Ms. Ashley Sheely to the...
Ashley Wilson, sorry.
Ashley Wilson to the Airport Commission?
Yes.
Is there a second related to that appointment? Mr. Reader makes the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, carries unanimously.
And Mrs. Uh, Suber, Shirley, Shirley Suber to the, uh, Library Board.
Okay. Motion from District Six to appoint Ms. Shirley Suber to the Library Board. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hip. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Okay. Uh, Newberry County Joint Planning Commission Town of Prosperity representative.
I'd like to reappoint Bennett Garner to the Joint Planning Commission for Town of Prosperity.
Okay, Bennett Garner, um, to the Joint Planning Commission for the Town of Prosperity. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Cease. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Okay? Any other appointments? Right. Uh, hearing none, we'll move now to public comments, and we have signed up, uh, first, Ms. Fran Merchant.
I'm saying...
Okay, all right. Uh, Ms. Donna Hill.
I am just thankful to this county and the Education Board for their stalwart support of our adult education, uh, effort that is going forward. Also, I want to thank this county council for also helping us in Whitmire as we go forward with the blessing of our town in having our classes there. We appreciate everything that you gentlemen do, and, uh, there is no way to say it, but thank you all for your time and devotion.
And the, and the, I'm, I'm not gonna say better half. I can't do that, Tony. I gotta live in Whitmire, so, but her other half. Tony Hill. Councilman Tony Hill from the Town Council of Whitmire, by the way.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay? All right. And, uh, Margaret Sparrow.
I'm just thought I was signing the road.
Oh, okay. We have that way more than you could ever imagine, so that's okay.
County president.
Yes, ma'am, we're glad to have you with us.
County president.
All right. Item fourteen on our agenda is an executive session. The executive session will be for purposes of contractual matters, um, and legal matters as outlined in our agenda. Is there a motion that we move into executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Cease. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise, and I make the commitment I always try to give you, and that is, we will be as brief as possible and respect your time and get back as quick as we can. And I make the commitment I always try to give you, and that is, we will be as brief as possible and respect your time and get back as quick as we can.
Everyone is back. Is there a motion that we go back into public session? Motion by Mr. C., second by Mr. Shealy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Newbury County Council met in executive session for the aforementioned reasons. No action was taken while in executive session. Item number 15 is ordinance number 0901-2023, which is an ordinance authorizing the creation of a capital projects account, authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing the Greenwood Newbury Industrial Park, authorizing the county to retain certain fee and lieu tax revenues to the fund, the capital projects account, and other related matters. Is there a motion this be first reading? Motion by Mr. C. that this is first reading, second by Mr. Shealy that this be first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. That motion carries unanimously. Item 16, no action is necessary on anything else discussed in council. Comments and requests from the county administrator?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I guess here at recent meetings, I've kind of given y'all a fairly lengthy list of things we're working on, so I'll be brief with this one. But I just want to mention, because we just had a work session, so let me give you a timeline on the remainder of the conference of plan, because I know that's been a pretty lengthy and involved process. The intent is to present the remaining elements to the planning commission at their September 19th meeting, that'll be their next meeting, and then to bring those remaining elements to y'all on October 4th, so we can get them to you, you know, well and fancily, so you can review them. The goal would be, and you know, y'all may decide that you want to alter this timeline, but it would be to have first reading of the ordinance that will be used to adopt the plan on October 18th, second reading on November 1st, and then adoption on December 6th. And then part of that, you know, we've got one meeting in November, and we also have a 30-day notice requirement for the public hearing on a conference of plans. It's a pretty lengthy notice, too, so we have to kind of use the schedule of the newspaper to, to a certain degree, to dictate the timeline. So that would be the game plan. So in a couple of weeks, you'll be getting the remaining elements to review. And then, of course, based on the discussion that we had earlier today on code enforcement, we've got some additional work to do with the draft ordinance, and we'll do that, bring that to you to include the other elements we just gained, which Chief among us knows.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Comments and requests from council? Reverend Curry?
Thanks, Lord. We have learned working together works. Now, I'm so glad to see everybody putting the youth down here together. Kind of, it's great. We learned we should not do one another works. And we are putting the good youth down here in Newbury County Council, and we're putting all the good youth. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reader?
I appreciate everything that we've gone through today. Appreciate the mileage and all the work that took place to get it to that point. So I'll say thumbs up to all the staff. And that's basically all I have. I enjoyed all the proclamations today, and I think those are truly necessary. So let's just keep up the good work.
Okay. Mr. C.?
Great job of putting things together. Great presentations on things. Staff's done a great job. Enjoy the work with you guys. Keep up the good work, girls, ladies.
Mr. Shealy?
I echo what Mr. C. said.
Okay. Vice chair here?
I think, yeah, we had a very good meeting, as we have had a lot of those lately, and very appreciative of them. We've got another challenge over there next one when we have the audit, and we look, because the results of that audit are going to tell a lot toward budgeting and going forward. So, you know, our work is never done.
Never done. Never done. All right. Future meetings, I would add to our future, I don't know that it's a meeting per se, but just as way of an announcement, the Public Safety Monument dedication will be Sunday at 3 o'clock at the old courthouse out there. So I don't know how many members of council will be there, so just out of an abundance of caution, we'll announce it as a meeting, just to kind of cover ourselves. And then executive committee meeting September the 11th at 6:00 p.m. and county council meeting September the 20th at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Shealy, then?
There's item Charlie on there, economic development.
I'm sorry, I didn't turn the page. Economic development meeting on September 25th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. C. I didn't turn over. We have to put all those on one page for me. Now, Mr. Shealy, do you have a question? Mr. C., do you want a second? All right. Is there discretion?
I'm moving out of the way so you can see.
All in favor by show of hands, we stand adjourned.